Good evening. This is John Hall, the Chair of the Oral Memorial Library Board of Trust in our September 8 meeting, courtesy of the now ubiquitous Zoom-type technology. Although being a local government entity, we're not doing Zoom itself, we're doing something else. I'd like to introduce the members of the board who are here before we proceed, and I'll call on them by name, and they can say hi and wave their hands and let you put a face with the name. Sarah Beg.
Hi.
Sarah. And Montgomery has joined us. So we have five of our six. George, Michael Lick. Marguerite Collins. The and I believe that's all five. Now, I'd like to ask the other people who were on or from the staff to introduce themselves, starting with Charlotte Cannelli, Library Director. And Leah Sampson, Assistant Director. Casey Arguro. And Patty Taylor. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. This is a group of items that rarely, if ever, invite discussion so they could be dispensed of collectively. If there isn't anybody here who has anything that they want to bring up regarding the minutes or the other parts of the consent agenda. I'm not seeing anybody jumping in, so I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Beg. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Montgomery. All those in favor, say aye, or we have to do it sequentially. Rules I've been told. So, I vote yes. Ms. Beg?
Aye.
Donna?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marguerite?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimously. There is no physical presence of the warrant. Charlotte, do you want to explain what that means for anyone who's seeing this for the first time?
Well, the warrant is typically the circulating, the items that we buy circulate. And we have not been circulating that warrant amongst the trustees since we went vertical.
Correspondence. We have one item from the Townwide Facilities Department.
Right, so, yep, that, they brought that over, they had a meeting with us and explained how we put in tickets. There's this particular software so that Casey and Jim and I can put in tickets. And if a ticket doesn't seem like it would be, do the trick because it's something that's much more urgent, those are the three numbers, Paul Ricardi, Chris Follin, and Maureen Heffernan, that we should be calling so that they can get somebody immediately to the library. So, we are now part, we are now going to be doing all repairs and service through Townwide Facilities. So, they will be, the company, they will be, just like calling the company, we will be calling Townwide Facilities, and they will be making sure that the service call goes to the right place.
Is the ticket system the same that was used for a long time by the schools?
Yep, school do. Yeah, so, we did have a leak last week that was pretty bad. We, we had a hard time, we had to root all of our patrons around the leak, we had big buckets. There was quite a bit of water, we had to keep the lights off, which was pretty difficult for the circulation department because the lights were really low. But once that leak, it was caused by an air conditioning, something built up in the air conditioning, the water, the bin kind of thing that collects it, and so that's what came through. It just happened to be coincidental that it was the same day as a downpour. So, that's been, they fixed that, they went out on the roof and got that all set. So, that will be, we have a service call when we change over from air conditioning to heating, and that company will come in and make sure everything's all set for the winter, when it, or for the spring, when it will be turned on again. So, that was great. We, we received immediate action by the Townwide Facilities, which, it was very helpful, so I think, you know, it's going to be a good, good way to go in the future for the, for the building.
Full business. First up is reopening services. You've been keeping us well posted on the many steps taking along the way. Anything you want to add as particularly recent or noteworthy?
Well, the only thing that is noteworthy is that we will not be doing anything different than what we're doing now until further notice from the Department of Health because Norwood is in the yellow. And, so, always expects on a department manager's meeting this morning, so it always fully expects those, the yellow to continue for maybe another week or so, and then we're hoping to get into green again. And once we've been in green for some time, then they, then departments can expand some of their services. Town Hall is opening up, they're going to have a very similar situation, they will have a greeter, and people will go in and will be met by a greeter at one door, so it'll be very, somewhat similar. The Council on Aging, they, they're, they started a few new things, but nothing from here on out will be planned to be changed until the Department of Health determines that it's okay. So, we will be, we're open this Saturday, but that was planned before. That's been planned for almost, you know, for several weeks. So, that's okay, but we will not be opening up any later at night, or Sundays, or anything else. We won't be doing anything differently than what we're doing now for, at least, pretty much through September, possibly we might change something in October, so. But it, patrons seem to be very happy. We had a Westwood patron today who was absolutely thrilled that we're open because Westwood is not. And so, we are getting Walpole and Westwood patrons into the library. Walpole is, has an appointment system that I believe they've continued. Patty, Casey, Lydia, do you know any differently about Walpole?
No.
I think, pretty much, I think what people are doing is they're staying with what, they're not making any quick changes. And we'll have to see what happens once school, you know, once more people are attending school. I have noticed today, the highway was, 24 was, was jammed for the first time. You know, was stopped, which hasn't happened since March, pretty much. So, people are going into Boston, moving around more.
Okay. Brushing fingers. LSTA Civic Hub.
We are looking forward to receiving a check before October 1st. We can't spend anything. We cannot have an invoice that is dated before October 1st for that grant, that's how that works. We have to spend all the money, it has to be invoiced by September 30th of next year. And Liz is working with several of the, she's working with a publisher who publishes these wonderful graphic novels for middle school and high school students. We're hoping to get those in for certain conversations. We're working with United Norwood, United Norwood for Peace and Justice, having some programs. We will be having the programs at the Baptist Church because we can't have any programs into, in the library right now, and their space is much bigger. So, Liz is, Liz is actively working on getting that grant up and running in the first weeks of October. So, I did include that in, in one of the emails to you, if you're interested in seeing anything that Liz is doing on that. We signed the contract, which is, which is pretty, you know, heavy. Kind of almost sign our lives away a little bit in order to get that federal money of $7,500.
Okay.
Let's see, it's very exciting to see that that's happening right now, you know, in Norwood, and it's especially exciting that Liz got the grant, wrote for it, and got it accepted and awarded to the library. And at this time, in the, in the country, that she took the initiative to bring it around to such a timely and important. I'm so proud of everybody that's working on it, it's just wonderful, it's great.
Great. Yeah, we're excited about that.
Yes, me too, all of us are.
Any other comments from the board on that item? Noise in the library and teen behavior.
Well, teen behavior has been fine, but it was very interesting this morning when we had a bird in the library. Pretty noisy as the staff was running through. Jim actually let the bird out, I think, in Casey's office? Is that what happened, Casey? I was on the town managers, in the town managers' meeting, and it got very noisy, and I thought, oh, if I have to speak, this isn't going to work very well, but Casey shut my door, and then they, they opened the window and got the bird out. Well, it must've been house sparrow or something, because that's what they do. You know, you see them all like in Costco and, and all those big warehouses and Home Depot. I'm assuming that's what it was.
Always a bit of
They came in through the open doors because we keep the doors open all morning. I'm assuming. So, that was, that was our excitement for the day, and that was our noise for the day. But other than that, it's very quiet in the library.
Well, good.
Except for
Go ahead.
Well, except for when we close at 1:30, people get a little noisier, but that's, that's, that's our update on library and teen behavior.
Okay, so, everything is sort of in the normal range with occasional avian exceptions. Reports, library budget.
Right, and you probably all think I'm crazy when I told you I was going to supply you with written reports tonight. I totally wasn't putting the two and two together, that you would have to look at all those reports in their, with their little tiny, you know, numbers. But, you have all of the FY '20 final budgets, and I wrote an FY '20 update that you should have gotten in a separate email. And if anybody has any questions on that, that's the usual budget summary that I write every single, usually August, sometime in July and August, and this year it was, it was delayed because the town actually just closed its budget. Was that last Friday, right? Casey, yeah, they just closed out the budget last Friday. So, we wanted to make sure we, you know, we had good numbers, and so. Anyway, we, looking into this year, are doing, are doing well with our special funds. Our balances on our special funds are what I would have definitely hoped. You know, after, after 12 years of, or so many years of watching them go down, and then the last couple of years watching them stay even or get better, it puts us in a really, you know, a great position. The one thing we have to worry about is the revolving fund because we are no longer doing the, the number of passports that we, that we were doing. Mainly because people aren't traveling. So. And as far as closing out the year, last year, we closed out the year, you know, with money to go back to the general fund, and that was partly because that was, had a lot to do with COVID. And the, the town picked up $5,000 in COVID. It's not the town, actually, it's going to be when the town gets the, I guess it's FEMA MEO money that's in a COVID, it's $2 million, and they, so, the, we've all been, all the departments have been charging to that COVID account. And we'll continue to do that for as long as the town tells us to do it. And one of the things that we're charging to the COVID account is that our overages in materials in electronic format and our supplies for COVID. There is things that we've had to buy, and cleaning supplies and whatnot. So, that, you know, that eased the burden a little bit of the FY '20 budget, and we paid, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at the utilities report, but our total utilities were down last year. We only spent, I think it was $65,000. $65,000, which was $10,000 less than, than our budget. Of course, we ended up spending, using that extra money because anything in incidentals can be spent on any incidental. We ended up spending that on materials in electronic format because we had such hefty, we, you know, we bought some new, some new services like RV Digital, and we pumped a lot of money into Hoopla. Lydia can talk a little bit more about that, but we, you know, we wanted to make sure that our patrons had what we, what we needed them to have in, as far as accessing the library virtually before we opened again for physical books and whatnot, so. Um, you know, so, that's the way the year ended up, and we're going into this year looking, looking good. The town actually cut our budget from $75,000 to $70,000 for utilities. We don't know how much of the decrease in utilities, most of that was electric. We don't really know how much of it was due to COVID and the fact that we weren't in the library working in the same way. But the lights were on almost every day, the custodians were there. The computers were turning on, we did at one point shut them down. I, I think it was maybe sometime in April, so we're not really sure how much of it was a decrease in electricity as much as it was, maybe possibly the chiller in the months of May and June. Operating a lot more efficiently. So, we'll see this year, we'll, we'll be able to see what, what happens with the utilities. But $70,000, I would think, would be enough. They also cut our telephone money because they were anticipating switching all over to VoIP, which is Voice Over Internet, in July, and they switched over last week. And, so, we had telephone bills for the first couple of months that we paid, which is, you know, we'll be able to cover that, but they had zeroed out that line item as well. But other than that, we should be, we should do fairly well, we aren't using a whole lot of travel money. I don't know what's going to happen with dues and conferences. I'm hoping that what we can do is maybe, if, if conferences go in-person by the end of the year, and actually, MLA is Massachusetts Library Association in March is already virtual. New England Library Association is virtual, that's in October. American Library Association Midwinter is already virtual. But it's possible that maybe with some of the professional development money we have in the dues and conferences budget, we could send maybe, you know, a staff or two to ALA if, if it's an in-person conference, so. But there are, there are going to be just some costs that will be lower for us because of the way that we're operating.
I've got a couple of questions inspired by things that you've mentioned or things I noticed. And the first one I want to do is pick up your suggestion that Lydia, you might have a bit to add on the materials in electronic form and what the trend is like and what we're seeing there.
Yeah, I'll let Lydia talk about that because she's, she's analyzing it practically daily.
Well, for Hoopla, we use patron-driven acquisition model, so it's just, it's being used a great deal. We put our caps back on, canopy and hoopla. We had, you know, expanded how many things people were allowed to borrow or view, and we put the caps back on. So, we're trying to rein in the usage, but a lot of it has basically doubled in the COVID environment. So, I'm trying to keep
And it's funny because that's what we were hoping for a long time ago. We were hoping that we could, you know, have people appreciate those services, and it took COVID, really.
Yeah, but be careful what you wish for because we're spending about $1,900 a month on Hoopla, and it started going up to over $3,000 a month. Now, we're back up, we're back to, I think, 29 or so. But, we are, we're seeing sort of a plateau at a higher level than where we first started, pre-COVID.
Lydia, do you think, and it's speculation I'm asking for, that the people who migrated to electronic because of COVID will stay with electronic once they have all the choices available again?
Yeah, I think people have signed up for these services, and they never really had the incentives to sign up before, but now that they've discovered them, they will keep using them. Maybe not at the extent that we saw in, in April when everyone was stuck at home, but I, I see, I see, we had a peak, and we'll come down a little bit, but the new plateau will be at a higher level than we were before.
Plus, we got new customers, we got new, we got patrons who were not, we got a lot of, I actually didn't look at the, all the statistics from, because the statistics all come in later than I send you the packet. So, I'm going to be putting a statistical report for July, August, and September together for you for the October meeting. But we did sign up new patrons for library cards because they could sign up remotely to access our materials in electronic format. So, we can kind of take a look at those numbers and see, see how many more library cards we, we got during those. I, I actually didn't take a look because the numbers came in later.
That's good.
This was the earliest that a trustee meeting could possibly be, the eighth. Yeah, the eighth of the month, which is, which is pretty early because we're putting it all together, you know, the week, a week before.
My second question is, and I think in, you already answered it under another heading. When I was looking at the budget, the LSTA expenditures had dropped the total by like 25%, and I thought, that looks like a, like a hit. I think it's part of the transitioning out of the last grant and into the next grant, and the limits on when you can spend money from each, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Well, the LSTA money also is not on a fiscal year, it's on a government fiscal year. So, it's October 1st to September 30th, where our year is, is July 1st to June 30th. That might be what you noticed. I'm not quite sure what you're referring to as far as, we've only, we've only, of the $10,000, we only spent $1,300 last year because Kate was, was ramping up what was going to happen for the spring with the Mind in the Making Grant, and then we didn't know what to do. And then she found out from the state that she should go forward and make the purchases. But the Mind in the Making Grant is all in library materials for, for the children, which was toys and a playhouse and all this other stuff. And we've gone ahead and we have them, but we won't be able to, the children will not be enjoying them until they're back in the library.
My last question, and then I'll hear if there are any from the rest of the board, is programs. Obviously, we're not in a position to offer programs the way we have been doing, and it may be quite a while before we, even more than we're doing now. Does the, does it affect that, or is it likely that we're going to end our fiscal year with a lot of unspent program money?
Well, we are spending money on programming because there are people that we are, exercise program, there is a exercise program, Indian cooking, Brazilian cooking. A lot of those virtual programs are costing just as much as if the person came into the library. And, and Liz and April are looking at ways to, to get different people in. And, and the presenters have figured this out. They've figured out that, you know, and they need to make a living, so it's only fair. You know, I, I imagine their, their income has just gone drastically down. So, they're sending out lots of emails to us and telling us about different things that they can be doing. They're really being very innovative. So, I think our programming, we, half of our programming costs were paid for by the Friends. And the Friends have not had any book sale, book sales either in the spring or they're not going to have one in November, and we really don't know what will happen by next May. So, I am going to submit, you know, I don't want to submit the full budget to the, that we normally would get from the Friends because their, you know, their income is down by probably $3,000 or more, more a year right now. So, and, and how that works is we paid for half of the year programming, and the Friends have paid for, for half of the year. So, I know that Liz and, Liz and April are, are continuing to spend on programming. But we spend a lot of programming money, extra programming money from the revolving account, which, of course, we're going to, we, you know, we're going to be really careful with that revolving fund going forward because it has to pay for our copier, which we didn't really expect we would have this hit. And we, when we signed the copier contract, that was part of signing it, was knowing that we could pay for it with the revolving fund. So, it, it's going to be a little tricky until we can get those passports, until people start traveling and need passports again. And some people are going to need passports for identification. Or their passport's going to expire, so they're going to want to have it, you know, have it up to date. But nowhere near are we seeing, you know, we were, Patty used to have Tuesday nights, Patty?
Monday.
Monday night, she would, she would do eight passports in one night, you know, and that's just not happening, so. We're doing a lot of notary appointments, but not passports, so.
Let me ask my fellow board members if they have any questions on any of this. I'm seeing any wild gesturing, so. I believe you've covered the utility budget, so I think we're up to personnel reports and the director search.
And John, you open?
Yes, the packet included some fairly up-to-date notes on what's going on. We, we had a full board meeting with the, with the consultant, following a full board meeting with Tony Mizuko, and between them, we, we got a pretty good sense of what the, what their ideas were on the process and the timing of the process. And I don't think any of us had a heartburn with any of that, so we've been proceeding on that basis. Since then, I believe Bernie has met with your staff, Charlotte.
No, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow. With the staff.
Yes, tomorrow.
By now that he's met with all six of, of the board members.
And he's met with me.
And he's met with you, Charlotte. So, he's on schedule, I think, to, to producing the kind of documents he's talking about producing over the next four weeks. And that includes, one of the later ones is a job description that can be used for posting. Also, he likes to prepare a, a snapshot profile of the town and the, and the library for context for people that are interested in the for context for people that are interested in the job. It's worked well for him in other settings. We've also got our steering committee named. And the steering committee includes the three members of the personnel committee of the board. That would be Marguerite and Sarah and George, plus Mark Ryan as a member of another department in the town. And Patty Fanning as an experienced former board member who has also been through a hiring, I believe, Charlotte. Yes. He's a, it's a pretty strong committee, I think. And there will be points when all of the board members will have a chance to, to chime in on, on everything as it goes. If you look at the materials that are in your packet, you'll see a bit more detail on what happens when. Any questions or additional comments? Okay, that takes us to item Roman Little 2, Brian D. Felice, accommodation and his MMA Suffolk program.
Right. And I, those were additional documents that weren't in the packet that I just gave you. And Brian had asked for, with childcare issues, the town is being very, very supportive of staff who need help. And Brian had some issues with childcare on Wednesday mornings. So he is working from home on Wednesday mornings and will continue to do so. Which was in that letter until we, you know, speak to him about, he'll, he'll update us on that situation. And then his MMA Suffolk work, he also will be receiving a letter from the town telling him what his expectations are for that and that his accommodation or his, one of the perks that he, he has for being in that program is that he will, he will miss 25 Saturdays at work. I mean, 25 Fridays at work because those are days in class. It's being held virtually right now and the hope is that they will be able to eventually meet in person. I think that the cohort meeting in person is so important. I think Lydia found that out because she had five meetings with the finance certification that she received and four of those ended up being virtual. And I think she would say that it was tougher virtual than it would have been had it been in person. You know, being able to network with the people is a big difference when you're in person. I had the luxury of 25 weeks in person with my cohort. There were 25 of us. And we got to know each other very well over that 25 weeks. So Brian will start virtually and then maybe he will be commuting up to Danvers every Friday. He does have time off, you know, they, he has a schedule. So there are some Fridays in the next, before May that he will be at the library, but most Fridays he will be in class. It's a tremendous amount of work. Many Thursday nights, I spent up till two o'clock in the morning getting my, my work done. So Brian's to really be, to be commended for wanting to do this just on the heels of, of finishing up his master's degree from San Jose State. So I think I'm really excited for him and he's, he's, he's enthusiastic about it himself. And I'm hoping that next year we have more candidates from the library who might be interested. I know that it's being paid for by the town. The tuition will be paid for through the HR budget. And the applicants go through the HR department now. So anybody interested next year? I'm sure Brian will, will, you know, try to fire up some, some of our staff. But I think it's, it's great that, that he's doing it. So, and just moving on quickly to the next, Carla Howard's tuition reimbursement. She will probably be coming back to us in May because it's written into the contract that if there's money left in May, she can ask for more reimbursement than the, than the $500. And I don't believe anybody else is taking any classes this year. And she, I have to, you know, give her a lot of credit. She's working hard on, on her master's degree in library science from San Jose State University in California. So I think it's great that we have, you know, I mean, Patty worked really hard on a couple of certifications of her own a couple of years ago. And I think, I think it's, it's terrific. And I'm hoping the trustees will continue encouraging all of our staff, both financially and, and in all other ways to, you know, take advantage of, of, you know, additional education.
Well, speaking just as one of the trustees, as long as everybody who takes advantage of one of these things does as well as the people have, who have had it before in recent years have done. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be just as enthusiastic as we have been. I think it's a major contributor to the fact that, as you described our activities earlier, Norwood really is a shining jewel in the Massachusetts library system. And that's because we've got really good people, really well-trained. Anybody have anything else they want to comment on these items?
Well, I, I'd just like to say that I think it's, you know, it just continues to add to the professional environment. And I think it's really important for people that, you know, choose any profession that they have those opportunities available to them. And it's, it's, I, I think it's great that, you know, we can support this and continue to have others, you know, take advantage of it. So I encourage it as much as possible.
I know I've, I put the bucket case easier a little bit, but it was a little overwhelming because she had just started. So, you know, and her kids are so little, but you know, eventually it might be something that other, you know, staff, paraprofessional staff might be interested in, in getting a library degree. And especially in doing that MMA program at Suffolk, which is really a wonderful experience.
And Ms. Cummings, I think I saw your hand.
Michelle, you've mentored many, many staff over the years and sometimes you've mentored them right out of the library.
Oh, I know.
The wonderful careers in, in, in library science and, and helped them with their careers. But yes, what George said, I'm with George and John.
And we do, you know, if, if someone leaves, which of course we have had people leave for, you know, better positions.
Better positions always.
But you know, what's been great is that we, we brought in other really talented people.
Absolutely.
Which leads us to Nancy Ling, because Molly Keen and I now need to sit down and talk about filling some of the positions that are going to be open, that will be vacant. And Nancy's leaving the 31st of January. And April is leaving right around then too. And, and me. We, we do believe that Jane Bradley will be retiring and that'll be another position. We're not quite sure. We haven't received the final letter on that. I need to receive final letters before, you know, it can be announced. But, so we, you know, we'll have some changeover this year that we have not had. Casey and Brian were the last people we hired. And now they're, you know, they're experts on staff because they've been with us for over two years. So we'll, you know, we're going to see some movement that we haven't seen in a couple of years. It's been nice. It's been very nice having such stability for the last two years without, you know, having to onboard new staff. And I think we've all, to be quite honest, the fact that we were all such a cohesive staff really made a difference during COVID. That we could, we could just be, you know, we really just did very well together, all of us. So, and of course, it's not over yet, but I'm hoping the worst is over.
Yeah.
On that hopeful note, sick back memo.
Well, I wanted to share that with you so you understood that. I, I shared, I'm sharing some things with you that I maybe normally wouldn't. But I think it's really important going into with a new director next year that you understand some of the things, some of the, the personnel accommodations that we make and the tuition reimbursement and various things like that. The sick back memo was something somewhat unexpected. And we found out, I think, even after July 1st, right, Casey? Yeah, that the three non-union people in the library with us, Casey, Lydia, and me were having to give up sick time because all non-union personnel in town were asked to give up. They had 15 days, we had 12. And we were, we were to give up two of our days. So that all non-union personnel have only 10 days sick every year. And, but what they did is they took that away from us and gave us a week's pay. Bumped and put into our base salary, which was very interesting. So they took, they took two days away from us. They took five days away from everybody else in the town. They took two days away from us and they, and they gave us the same benefit. So mainly because we hadn't been receiving the extra five days for years that we technically should have been because we're non-union. So anyway, it, it came out, I think, pretty even. So that was something that we didn't expect at the last minute on, in July. So I just wanted you to see that that came down from the town manager's office. So it's interesting to note that, I think it'll be interesting going forward that you understand that Casey and Lydia, that, that the administrative assistant, the assistant director, and the director will not receive the benefits of the past without some negotiation. Because in the past, the trustees always wrote a letter and said, the confidential employees, which is the administrative assistant, the assistant director, and the director will always receive the same benefits that the union staff receives. And that's no, that's no longer the case in the library. So I want to make sure that you, that you know that and that you can be aware of that in there, either in the contracts or in what, you know, how the new year will start. So that's something to think about.
Sounds like a more challenging exercise to try to achieve what looks like parity when certain parts of the agreement are designed not to have parity.
Right, right. And I think Casey will really be on top of it. Casey and Lydia will be on top of it through the transition. That they'll, you know, they'll be aware of it and maybe they can bring it up, you know, to the board, to the director, so that we make sure we're on top of it. Because we don't want anybody to fall through the cracks.
Amen.
Going forward.
Thank you for that. Friends of the library.
Marguerite and Lydia can talk, I guess, about.
Marguerite?
Well, still, there hasn't really been a meeting, but there is, they're planning a Zoom meeting, right, Lydia? Sometime soon? Lydia, I think, has her microphone off.
Yeah, it's not, not planned yet, but they're talking about it.
They're talking about it. But it's still getting, even though COVID is, oh yeah, they are still getting new members, which is very nice. So the Friends, they're not actively recruiting, but the word is out that the Friends is a wonderful organization, so they are getting new members. So I'm happy to hear about that. And they're looking into programs, like Charlotte was saying, and they're looking into even maybe having a socially distant program similar to the, when they had last year down at, what do they call that place? Little?
Little Bird.
Little Bird. A music one down there. Outside, they have them in the, in the back there. They have, I guess, a patio. And it would be sort of similar to what they had, correct me if I'm wrong, but sort of similar to the Chateau. It'll be, it'll be, you know, it'll be just their regular day, but the pro, some part of the proceeds will go to the library. And if it doesn't work out that way, at least it will elevate the library, you know, in the community. So they're still trying to work out how and what and when that will come about. But, so anyways, that's where it's at as far as I know, is you, what, what do you have to add, Lydia and Charlotte?
Well, their membership, they, they have the light, light department, the light building meeting in December, which has been a great time because people join at Christmas time, which has been wonderful. So that'll start going out in December and Dan already got approval from the selectmen, I believe, for that.
Yeah.
Lydia, do you want to add something?
Um, that about covers it.
Anybody have any questions for? I'm not seeing any wild way of answering. Programming report. Well, we heard a bit of that earlier. Anything more, Charlotte, that you'd like to add?
No, it, it, it just always stays on the agenda, but we pretty much have talked about, you know, the library programming that we've had that they continue. And I did send you the, April put together some publicity reports for you so that you, you could see all the social media posts that have gone out. Carla Howard's done an amazing job keeping social media posts on, on our website and whatever, pretty much every day. So they've been great.
Menus.
Great. Maintenance and repair.
Well, in, in that, we do have a couple of projects that we are now on hold with the maintenance department being the department that will work on those. And that was the back windows, the rear windows of the library. And I'm hoping that they will get moving on those because we do have a, a significant maintenance and repair budget now that has worked for us very well over the last couple of years. And that would be great if we could get those windows replaced. I, I have to say the maintenance department, when they came in, Paul Ricardi and Chris Folen were, said that they were very impressed with the state of the library, that it was in great shape. And I told them that we have been really focusing on this and that Jim has been, you know, come to us every single year and asked for those things that need to be repaired. The linoleum in the back hallway really needs to be replaced too. So I'm going to sit down with them and see if they, I think they're, you know, the maintenance department, just the townwide facilities just got up and running. And they've got a lot to do to get schools ready and everything. So I would like to talk to them about doing that as well. And then the lighting, we had capital money for the LED lighting project, but now the green, I can't remember the name of it, but they all, they got a grant, a green grant that could possibly pay for that lighting, all those upgrades. So that needs to be done as well. And then we, we had on the capital plan our RFID project and, and the library painting project. So I'm going to talk with the maintenance department, make sure that those, yes, the Green Community Designation, thank you, Joe. That, that is a grant that would possibly pay for that LED lighting so that the town does not have to spend the money from the capital money that was given to us for the LED lighting. And what then, we're hoping to be 100% LED lighting, which will be, which will even save more electricity.
Sounds good. Any questions about all of that? Okay. I see no business under new business. Any search warrants?
There were none.
Somebody's got a train coming by. How about miscellaneous advisories?
No, we just really don't have any. It's been very quiet. We've been just, you know, making. They're very quiet. We've been just, you know, making our patrons happy, but not a lot of, no behavior issues.
That's great. Staff and public remarks. This is where we, we put our guests from the staff on the griddle to tell us what they've been reading that has particularly struck them. And Charlotte, if you could start with you.
Well, actually, I've been reading this very interesting, a couple of interesting accounts of, I don't know if anybody knows anything about NXIVM. NXIVM is N-X-I-V-M, which was Keith Rennery had a.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, up in Albany. And he was recently, I believe he was sentenced, actually, I don't know if he's been sentenced, but he was found guilty. And it's a very interesting story because, you know, it's, it, it was supported by a lot of very, very, very intelligent people who were taken into this, it was, it's a cult. And there's a podcast and there's, oh, The Vow is out. And that is an HBO documentary. It's about, I don't know, about 10 parts, I suppose. It's dropping every week, so we have to wait. And so that's out, that's what got me interested. But there have been a couple podcasts, he's been the subject of several podcasts. And there are several books out. I can't remember the one that I'm listening to right now on Audible, but several of the women who were involved have written, have written books about it. And I, I find it really fascinating because he was supposedly the, the most intelligent man in the world. He claimed to have a, an IQ of 242 or something like that. And, but a lot of that was kind of made up, it was a myth. Very, very bright guy, but anyway, interesting, interesting story.
My interest in that story, Charlotte, has been mainly about his chief female person, Alison Mack, who is one of the stars of the Smallville TV series. And I had always regarded her as a, a bright, fresh, young actress with a good future. She apparently not only went all the way in on this, and I think is going to be doing some time herself, tried to bring in one of the other Smallville stars, Kristen Kreuk, who was a, a little more savvy about these things and managed this tier clear.
Yep. And the Bronfman, the Bronfman sisters, who were heirs to the Seagram money. And they spent, I don't know, they gave him like $40 million. You know, it, it's pretty amazing how, you know, how people can get involved in this stuff and, and just not, you know, not, not see through it. So I thought it was pretty fascinating. So it's crime, but sort of crime of different nature than the, the crime that, true crime that Lydia and I usually read. But it's still crime.
That up for you, what are you reading?
Well, I just finished Theft by Finding by David Sedaris. It's a collection of his diaries. And I wanted something kind of light and fun and funny. And he's pretty predictable, so I got what I was looking for. I was listening to that on audiobook, which is a great way to experience David Sedaris. And I also, in a totally different slant, finished The Girl on, which was very dark.
Girl what, Lydia? Girl what?
On the train.
Oh, Girl on the Train.
Sounds good. Casey, what are you reading?
I am reading The Ballad of Songbirds and Snakes by Suzanne Collins. It's the prequel to The Hunger Games series.
How is that?
I'm enjoying it. I'm very close to the end. It's not as engaging as the original trilogy, but it's nice to be back in the universe. So I'm enjoying it. The president, the.
President Snow?
Yeah, so he's the teenager and he's a mentor to a young girl that's in the game currently. So it's a nice, it's fun.
Patty, how about? I'm sorry, anything more, Casey?
No.
Patty, how, what are you looking at?
Well, currently I'm reading Queen Bee, and that's by Dorothy Abbott and Frank. And that's going to be my turn the page book title for next week, for the September read. What had happened was we've kind of toned down the books a bit by request of the members. They do not want to read any dark books, they don't want to read anything too heavy. They want sort of like an escape read. So although we did read a historical fiction last month, and the author zoomed in with us, which was wonderful. But they, you know, I kind of, I'm kind of, right now, letting the group kind of lead me as to what they'd like to read. And it's, I mean, this book is very enjoyable, it takes place in the South. It's, she's a very, she's no longer with us, but she's written many, many books. And this is the first book of hers that I've read. And I do have to say, she is quite a writer. And I, I certainly would read more of her books. But yeah, so that's, that's it for right now.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to the board selections, Sarah, let's start with you.
Okay, well, I definitely was working more on my summer read list this summer, which is how I usually spend the summer, trying to catch up on fun stuff. So I, I guess I'm behind the ball here on the Ellen Hildebrand books because I was still back finding What Happens in Paradise and reading that one. And apparently there's more out there that are flying off the shelves of the library. So I guess I better get caught up. I did get to visit our little free library that we liked to go to when I was out of town last month. And they had some current, or relatively current to me, I guess, books that were available to borrow. And so I was able to read another book in Lisa Scottalline's series that works with the female lawyer group. And so I, I read Feared and then immediately handed it on to my mom when she was able to come visit. And she plowed through it, I think, in less than a day and a half because it was very, very good, particularly if you already know her main characters there. Rosato and Denunzio are their last names. So I, I mostly focused on fun slash thriller type because the, the lawyer one, there's always some deep, dark thing going on in the law, the law cases. And that was really good.
Thank you, Sarah. Marguerite?
Well, I just, before I get into the book, I just want to say, I, I attended the Zoom State Aid Workshop today, which was good for me because I haven't attended it's, you know, it's been three years since I attended one of those. And they had a big focus on COVID. And, you know, since I'm back on the Budget Committee, I figured I better like bone up on things. So I was, it was great. And tomorrow they have an, which, something which we will never need. But it was the waiver for state aid and I'm always curious about that. So I don't know how they're going to spend two hours on that since they did touch on it quite a bit today, you know, and if this happens and if this happens. But they had a questionnaire on COVID for people to fill out for budget this year, which was very interesting. And all of the questions that they asked about COVID, know it was, you know, doing everything that they asked long before it looks to me like needed to be done. I mean, as soon as COVID started due to, you know, the technology, Lydia, your group just started right away, just banging that stuff right out. And they asked questions like before, COVID, did you offer any electronic, you know, like Libby Hoopla, any of those? Did you offer any of those to your patrons? If, if so, what did you offer and did they take part in it? And how many? And if not, did you offer it afterwards? And if so, how many? And somehow I think that would be hard to tease out those numbers, especially from before, how many people? And how many people after? And if you are, if you had programs, how many people zoomed in? I, I think that might be hard also, but to, to quantify how many people. But it was interesting and it was certainly different than the last one I attended. But it was, it was a good one. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow's too. And once again, for the sixth time, I'm going to the trustee orientation at the end of the month.
We are able to get all those numbers of how many patrons are downloading and how many patrons are registering for all of our electronic. You know, we, we get those numbers every single, every single month. And we also.
But I mean, if people are listening from their phone, can you still get them? And can you get it from whatever?
Well, are you talking about, about programs? We require, we have a registration. So we, we know how many people are, are, have zoomed in, how many people are registered. So we're able to get pretty good numbers on those things. So yeah, I'll have some numbers for you next month.
Anyways, you're, you're just going to slide up to the top of that, to the top of the numbers on all of those things? I'm just sure of it. And it was funny because when I was reading it, I was, I was thinking, of course, of Waltham. Is that's, that's the, is that this, is, is that this? What, what was, what library am I thinking of where they?
Wilburn?
Wilburn. Yeah, well, nobody's at, nobody's at work, nobody, nobody doing anything. It was just shocking to me that, how are they going to turn in anything? But anyways, neither hand are there.
They actually are back, they actually are back at work, but all of the full-time people are not back to work full-time.
I have a thought for, for Charlotte and for Brian is.
Charlotte, Charlotte, your mic's off, okay. I'm sorry, John.
I think there's going to be a lot of interest in tales from COVID as we go along. And there might be interest in how each of the departments in the town handle things, what, what challenges they were most aware of, how they made changes and how they kept things going. The sort of thing that might fit in the column that the library does in the transcript or in other places where the human interest stories surrounding what we're all going through, I think, have a audience.
Yep, oh, we'll pass that on to our writers. My last column is this week, so it's due this week. So we can maybe ask someone, one of, one of the staff who are writing, if they'll, you know, be interested in writing something like that. Donna, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I did. When I was reading the directors, the, the various department notes and things like that, I was thinking that it was kind of reading, like some of the books I've read about disaster times. But, you know, and I was thinking, this would make fantastic historical information, you know, to put it together a little bit differently and show what the library did during this period of time.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, it would make for an interesting history. So yeah, but, and the trustee packets are, all of those directors' reports and whatnot are, are available. You know, I, they're up on our staff information page. So there's a way to, for, for somebody to get at them, which I think it'll be interesting a year from now to, I think, possibly to sit back and look and see how it was. I think we're a little bit amazed at how we, sorry, how we got through it. I'm going to mute myself again.
When I made my suggestion, I mentioned Brian as a target for the comments because it seems like the kind of series or program opportunity that community media might decide to pursue with its own approach to things. They've done well on such things. I think we're up to Donna, you can.
I, I just want to talk about my book for one minute, John. John, I just want to talk about my book for a minute.
Go ahead.
I read a book that was, that was recommended by Sarah. The, the bookwoman of Troublesome Creek. Thank you. That was a great book. I loved that. That's all.
Now, Donna.
Okay, so I'm doing light reading. I can't deal with all the usual heavy stuff that I read. So what I'm reading right now is Robert Goldsboro's newest one, Archie Goes Home. And he writes the Nero Wolfe series since Rex Stout passed away. He's written a bunch of them. And I've always liked Rex Stout and Nero Wolfe, so that's what I'm reading.
Rex Stout's Nero Wolfe was one of my mother's favorite mystery series. And she was into all of the series. Then there were fewer to be into. You think Goldsboro does a good job?
He does a pretty good job. The, the, the characters are quite familiar to me. I've read those books so many times, I can't tell you, the Rex Stout ones. And I had them on tape, so I would listen to them over and over. And then his sister Ruth Stout, she wrote a series of books. One of them is Gardening with No Work and some other things. And she had some radical, they were both pretty interesting characters. She had some radical ideas. She didn't believe in curtains on windows. She thought they just made too much work. And if you couldn't keep your clothes on, then that was too bad for the neighbors, you know, things like that. And he had some interesting ideas too in his personal life. So yeah, I like them.
All right, on that note, George, what have you got?
I'm actually reading, he's a brand new author, he was, he's a client of mine. And he wanted to self-publish a book, so I designed the cover for him and he sent me the book. So I figured I should do him the favor of reading it. It's a, it's a, I guess you'd call it a loose historical novel. It's based on the Boer War. And he came across a cachet of letters that his grandfather, who fought in the war, sent to his great aunt. And he kind of constructed this story because he spent a lot of time, his grandfather spent a lot of time in a prison camp. And so he, you know, has built this story around, you know, what it was like because he, you know, he was a, well, what would become to be known as an Afrikaner. And he, you know, fought against the British and then was captured. And I'm about, just about a third of the way through. But he makes it very clear in the front of the book that it's not, you know, historically accurate. There are parts of it that are historically accurate. And I think knowing that is making it a little challenging to read because I have to stop and look and say, okay, did this really happen? Because it's, you know, and, and it's true, some of the things that he's included that seem, I mean, the, the, you know, living conditions in those camps were beyond horrible. But you read some of these, some of the accounts, and I found a couple of references to things that, that he included that were true. So it'll be interesting to make it through. I mean, this, I'm not sure if he's going to write any more. Like I said, he's self-publishing this. And I'm not sure, you know, how much interest he's garnered from it. But, you know, so far, it's, it's interesting to, to read someone's venture into this. Fascinating.
What's the name of it?
It's called Geno's War.
Nice cover.
Oh, thanks.
Nice cover, George.
Oh, thanks. Yeah.
Thank you.
We're around to me now. The only thing I've read from start to finish, and it was by way of audiobook, is something that I've been hearing with Sarah, which is the Baldacci series. The latest Memory Man came out some months ago and Jeanne and I have listened all the way to the end of it. It had a number of the same rewarding elements of the characters, but it didn't have. but it didn't have any really new interesting characters or any new developments in their lives or in their capabilities, which I felt I had gotten in the preceding books. So he may be running out the string, or maybe I'm being too harsh. We've also gotten into one of his other series, which is up to two books. Six foot tall, female, law enforcement type who's trying to solve the mystery of her sister's murder while she does all sorts of other things as well. I've got somebody I know who's got a book coming out. My sister is a professional poet, and she has her fourth or fifth book that's being published that is due out by, before the end of the year. Oh, I'm excited. Been a while since I've had a new one out. Also, everybody knows that I'm into graphic novels. Recently, the New York Times has done a number of interesting full pages on some aspect or other of graphic novels or cartoons or what have you. And recently, my wife pointed me to a page where they had, here are a dozen graphic novels that are coming up in the next few months that look really interesting. And several of them were sort of the dark political sort of things that are very much in vogue now for obvious reasons. And two of them I intend to seek out and may be able to report on at a future board meeting, if they're as good as the initial write-up suggested. So not a whole lot to report, but things going on.
John, you'll be excited to know that my granddaughter in kindergarten learned to read this year. And it's all, it's all graphic novels. Babysitter Club, graphic novels. There are just amazing graphic novel series out there. Of course, I buy most of them for her. She's got this incredible library that, by the way, she alphabetizes. But it's, it's really amazing what, what, you know, how, how much she enjoys that genre.
One of the things that's intrigued me about the business is the way that long-running characters are spinning off series that are aimed at a different interpret, long than simpler language, shorter, more cartoony pieces, being characters now for several years. And it will have gotten quite a following. But the other experience, Nancy Drew and the Hardy Boys, if you were following them, have had a series of mini-series, extremely dark. They're adults and they're trying to solve crimes in their hometown. Usually a friend or relative is implicated. And in the most recent one I've been reading, the chief villains are the Bopsy Twins. Saying the Bopsy Twins, before you say villains, is enough to say, I want to turn the page on that one. So they're, they're mixing and matching and finding different combinations for different audiences. And, and I, I commend them. Some of them will work and some of them probably won't. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order? We are due to meet next on October the 13th. The full schedule through January is at the bottom of your agenda page. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Donna's second. I'm in favor. I. Marguerite?
I.
Sarah?
I.
George?
Hi.
And
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good meeting.
Bye.
Good night.
See you next month.